Thank you. Good evening. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you for joining us this evening at a regular Board of Directors meeting. The first order of business is to adopt our agenda. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to read out the agendas presented.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. All right. Next on the agenda is the good news report. We're going to call up our Directors of Communication, Gail Spohler. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening. First of all, you're going to notice that the good news report is in a little different format today. We are moving to an easier and more ADA compliant format. It will allow us to post on the website and again, allow us for ADA compliance on the website and then also it embeds better in our social media. That way we can actually have the videos embedded before we've given you the links. This way people will be able to look at it as most people do on their phones or on tablets and then directly click in there. It's also easier for our media partners like Clark County Today, Columbia and WASTA to go in there and electronically be able to pull things off and incorporate them in. So, a little change. We're excited though to move to this new format and we think that it will actually provide folks a better glimpse of what's going on in the district through a little better with video and photos. So with that, we'll jump right in. If you scroll through, the first set is some additional Veterans Day celebrations from earlier last month. And then, we go right into Pioneer Elementary School celebrating Kindness Day. So as you can see, there were charming photos and they decided that they would celebrate World Kindness Day to make sure everyone felt special and appreciated at Pioneer Elementary. Of course, that's followed by this lovely photo of our Board of Distinction as you were awarded. I believe we counted the sixth time in the last 10 years as school Board of Distinction honored at the state level. So we're very proud of you. So of course, we included that photo right there. We also, Mountain View High School hosted the La Chispa Latino Youth Leadership Conference. They had invited middle school students from throughout the district. We had almost 200 middle school students and more importantly, we had 20 to 30 of our Mountain View Latino students being mentors for them as they celebrated their heritage and leadership. I know several of you were at the STEM Summit, the Girls in STEM, well, we're calling it Girls in STEM and Boys too, as over 250 5th through 8th graders discovered all sorts of interesting things involved in STEM-related subjects and potential careers. It was hosted by our CTE staff at Heritage High School back in early November. Also, a number of community sponsors participated as well. And of course, as we start into the Thanksgiving season, a number of our schools began their food drives and those of course will continue all the way through our winter break. But we featured two, Henrietta Lacks. They not only collected food and other donations for homeless shelters and the food bank, they were also able to restock their own school pantry. And then, at Mountain View High School, they actually partnered with several organizations that it ended up with 100 turkeys being delivered to the school that also went in with food boxes so they had a Thanksgiving meal as well as they also made sure that they had food for students throughout that four-day break as well. So again, new format. I hope you'll take a look at it and enjoy some of the videos and we'll keep you posted as we refine the format.
Thank you, Gail. All right. Next is our Superintendent Report. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Merino.
Thank you. I was going to mention the Board of Distinction too, but Gail gave me to it. I would, I guess, first thing I want to say is I've continued the school visits. I've had the opportunity to, I've previously been to most of the secondary schools, but I've had the great opportunity to get out and speak to our elementary principals over the last several weeks. So just in the last couple of weeks, I was at Fisher's Landing, Ellsworth, I did go to Heritage, or Bill and I were at Heritage, Sifton, Marion, Columbia Valley, Riverview, York, Pioneer, Silver Star, and then Home Choice Academy as well. And it's great, I know, I know everyone, but it's, it's great to have the opportunity to get to meet the principals maybe in a little different capacity than what my capacity has been in the past, but also I shared with the elementary and the high school folks, it's also great to get to look at things from a different, through a different lens. And so I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to get out and speak with folks and see the programs that we have in our schools, really particularly focusing on our special needs programs and seeing what kind of supports we can try to put in place as we move forward, not only for the kids but for the administration as well in terms of the impacts that we see on some of the buildings. So it's been, it's been great. Also wanted to point out, I don't know if you saw the, the report on kgw.com and in our district Facebook page, also Gail posted a link to it, the work that Dawn Harris had done at York, the Kindness 911 work with the students and the sheriff's office and going out and caroling for Laura Burby, one of our teachers that's had some health issues. So if you haven't had a chance to see that, that's a really great story, really, really wonderful thing that they did for her. I would also mention a couple of things legislatively, was able to have a phone conversation with a few lobbyists as well as superintendents from Seattle, Tacoma, Spokane, Highline, and myself, talking about strategies around the upcoming legislative session and what we might do to kind of keep the focus on special education funding and working with them. So we've got some strategies about going to Olympia and having another meeting like we had last, last winter. So that's, I think it's good to be able to partner with some of the larger districts. I think we have represented a pretty good percent, a decent percentage of the kids of the, of the state of Washington. We've also started looking at, you know, we've got the Lift Initiative. We've been operating that for a period of time. We've had some conversations about what changes we might make upcoming. And so we started having conversations with our internal staff about the next refresh, what that might look like. And we're kind of locking down some numbers around that. So we'll come in a workshop soon and have a conversation about what we're thinking around that as well. And I guess I would just close with saying, you know, it's been, you know, we're almost to, to the holiday break. So I think it's wonderful that everyone is going to get an opportunity to have a two-week break. It's, it's always a long stretch when we go. I was happy that we were able to celebrate last night, the Cabinet and the Board. I would like to call it the first annual, as long as you'll allow me to keep having annual ones of these get-togethers. We got together and for me, I've been talking for months about relationships and building relationships within the community. We have to start within the district, whether that's with, with the administrative group, with the teachers, with, we need to rebuild relationships. I feel like for us to be a strong team as a cabinet, as well as myself with the Board, these are the kinds of things that we need to do. Sometimes it's nice to get away from the stuff that we deal with on a daily basis and have fun. When we do that, it's always a public event, you know, because we have more than three Board members. It's public. We even sometimes have people from the community come to these and they're welcome. That's wonderful. And, and it's also important for me to let the community know that when we do these kinds of things, it's not the district that pays for it. It's actually out of our pockets that we pay for that. That is important to note. So I had a great time last night. I hope everybody did and look forward to doing it again next year.
It was nice. Thank you for including us. It was really fun.
I had a good time. Yeah, it was also great to see John Dieter come back as a community member and, and be there. It was, it was good to have him around. He's a great guy and it's always wonderful to have him around.
Yeah, it was great to finally meet him after I've heard so much about him from all of you guys.
Yeah. So thanks to Cabinet, thanks to the Board for doing this. I was worried I was going to be the only one there, but if I was, it would have been funny and it would have been fun.
Sports on TV.
Still wouldn't have had fun.
I would have been fine by myself. I could talk to myself.
But both you can. All right. Thank you, Mike. All right. Next on our agenda, special evening, is our Administration of Oath of Office to our elected directors. We have three, Victoria Bradford, Rob Perkins, Rachel Rogers, and we have Greg Kinsey, Clark County Auditor, tonight to do the oath of office for these folks. So they'll step forward in front of the podium and we'll sit here.
Yes.
How are we staying?
Hi.
Hi. Hi, Rachel.
How are you? Thanks for coming.
You bet. So, are you guys okay? Just been all together?
Yes, yes. We like your safety in numbers. We like that.
Mike's talking about relationship building, team building.
There we go.
Get the short, first sentences.
You'll raise your right hand. You'll repeat after me. You'll state your name and we'll get to the hard part, your, your district number. So, aye, state your name.
Aye, Rachel.
Rob Perkins.
Victoria Bradford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skills and ability.
Skills and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of.
Perform the duties of the office of.
Evergreen School District Number 114.
Evergreen School District Number 114.
School Board Director.
School Board Director.
District Number.
District Number Three.
District Number Two.
District Number Four.
Well done. In and for Clark County, Washington.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Well done. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Lots, lots of signatures now.
Victoria's signature is illegible. Close to mine.
It's too long.
It's too many words.
It's very pretty though.
Yeah, it's cursory. It's personal.
It's real cursory, yes.
The lost art.
Okay. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was exciting. Four years. We're honored.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So with that, our next item on the agenda is Board Reorganization. Every year, and we always do it in our first meeting in December after the election, even if we don't have new representatives elected, we always talk about doing Board Reorganization where we elect President, Vice Chair, and then our Legislative Representative, the person that represents our board in Olympia and with the WASTA group. So with that being said, we will go ahead and open it up to the Board for discussion.
I'm, you know, as we've been thinking about this last year in particular, we had a really challenging year. Just so many things have gone on. I won't go through all of them, but we, you know, went through the situation last fall and then we had a change in Superintendent. We had the measles. I mean, the measles thing alone was a challenge. I mean, just, it was kind of one thing after another. We had to, had to replace a Board Member and we thankfully got Rachel and I'm glad that she was elected into the position permanently. But it was a lot of churning and we've, we've become even stronger as a Board and as a team. So one of the things that I would like to recommend is that we kind of keep some stability for the Board and not get things too, too much change just to give ourselves a little bit of a break, to give you as the new Superintendent, some kind of foundational stability. So that would be one of my recommendations to the Board.
Yeah, you know, coming in kind of as an outsider into this, I feel like the Board was running really well when I came in and, you know, I think that having the leadership from Julie and Victoria as our President, Vice President really helped me kind of on the onboarding process and learning. And I don't feel like I've had enough time, that there's been enough time where you guys have been kind of our leaders. And so I would be happy if you guys are willing to continue your roles. And I think it would be good for the Board as a whole and then also personally for me as a Board Director to continue learning from you guys.
Another thing too is Rob has been our Legis- Legislative Representative. How many years now? Two years have he done it, the last few years, or maybe he's done it for WASTA?
Two full years. Yeah, I think it's the last two years.
And then Rob also represents the Washington State School Board Association as our Region Six area representative. So he represents all of the school districts in our area at the state level. And so not only has he been doing the work as our Legislative Rep, he's done it for the whole entire region, which is a lot of work and, but he does a really fantastic job at it. You know, there's a lot to it and Rob stays on top of all of the new legislation that's coming out and works closely with our Superintendent team and then others in the, in the area and at the state level. So, thank you for that work. And I would appreciate, I guess, if Rob would continue on that role because of the work that you've done.
I would be happy to. Doug tails nicely with the, having, having a legislative role and being on the Legislative Committee. I think we, we had that with Michael, who also had that role and it, it's an amplifier. It helps us bring our district's story into the state and it's actually gotten us attention for the programs and, and the people that we're really proud of, alike the work that they've been doing at the Skill Center, our Cascadia Tech. I don't think we would have had that if one of us hadn't been saying, hey, get down to this corner of the state and take a look. And when they did, they were so astounded that they put it in their magazine. So yeah, I'd love to continue telling our story as broadly as possible because I think a lot of what we do is, is in function as a model for districts elsewhere. And being in those conversations means that I learn about what we can use too from elsewhere.
Yeah, I think you're really good at the legislative stuff and it seems like you really enjoy it. So.
I'm kind of weird that way.
I know I'm not ready to take on that role. And so I'd also be happy to continue with that stuff.
So, well, do we need a motion? Yeah, we need to make some motions, probably for each one and do them separately.
Yeah, correct.
I need to take a look at the policy and it says roll call vote. So we need a nomination in a second. At least need a nomination and then the roll call.
I would nominate Julie Bocknager for President.
I second that.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to nominate Victoria Bradford for Vice Chair.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye, Mrs. [inaudible].
All right. And then somebody want to make a nomination for Legislative Representative?
I'd like to nominate Rob Perkins for Legislative Representative.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Very good. Gosh, we don't do that often. We're not very good at it. All right. Well.
Good. So we'll just keep things the same.
Keep things the same.
Mike, we won't disrupt your life too much this year, hopefully. Things will be calmer.
Do I miss that to disrupt yours?
Well, it'd be nice to have a year where we can just do the work.
Yeah. And just keep moving things forward in the district and keep getting better as a team and, yeah. We've got a lot of good things going. So continue the good work. All right. Next then on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. So we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Board's Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next is the Superintendent Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for that.
I move that we accept the Superintendent Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next on our agenda is Monitoring District Operations. We have an Operational Expectations OE 10 Learning Environment. This is a second reading for approval. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Merino just for a brief review.
Yes. So this is a second reading.
Read.
This is a second reading. We workshopped it. What you see in your information is both the copy of the first reading and then the clean copy of the second reading statement. We have added in this, to the learning environment, we've added Safe Supportive Learning Environment. We've removed a few things that were covered in other OEs. That's what we have done in the last couple of meetings. And then we've added the language around boundary invasions in Section Four. The Superintendent may not tolerate any behaviors, actions, boundary invasions, or attitudes by adults who have contact with students that hinder the academic performance or the well-being of students. So there aren't any changes from what was discussed at our last meeting. And at this time, I would recommend the Board accepts the revisions for OE 10 Learning Environment as presented for approval.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience on this OE 10 Learning Environment policy?
No, but I do have one back on 62, Resolution 6279. So when we're done with this, we can go back to that for a moment.
Are we talking about something that was in the, in one of the consent agendas?
Yes.
So we'll have to do that for a public comment at this point?
We can accept a public comment, but we'd be able to respond since it is on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it during public comment.
We'll do it during public comment. Okay. So any other questions on OE 10, the policy part from the audience? All right. Then, questions from the Board?
Did we have any, anything from staff or any of our bargaining groups? Since this has to do with learning environment, did we hear anything from EEA regarding this or any of our other bargaining groups?
No.
Okay.
So, we should probably make the motion in a second before we continue discussion.
Yes.
I move the Board to accept the revisions for Operational Expectations OE 10 Learning Environment as presented for approval.
Second. All right. Now we'll open it up to the Board for questions. Thank you, Rob. I jumped the gun. I was just so curious. I asked for a question before.
Where was I? My brother accidentally closed interview and everything. Yeah, just to comment one last time, appreciating that we did change the title to describe learning environment in general terms and, and the insertion of boundary invasions. And I'm hoping data about boundary invasions as we go will give us an idea of whether or not what we're saying captures everything. When I was in a conversation on Saturday with Fisher's Landing East Neighborhood Association and they brought up student safety as a question, and I was able to point to these, the results policies that we did and, and the contents of this and answers what appeared to be satisfactory. So they have good documents to have phasing with the public. Really excited that we did this work.
Yeah, it looks like we made all the changes we talked about last time. And the only thing I would note, I'll typo on here, it says it's revised December 12. I think it should say the 10. Oh, it says the 10. If we adopt it.
Yeah. We can still.
Oh, okay. We can probably make that change in this poll.
Yeah, it's not substantive. It's just a correction date.
Yeah, it's 12.
Okay. So any other questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So then the next one is OE 10 Learning Environment Interpretation and Indicators. So again, this is for a second reading.
Yeah, I would, I would say the same thing. That you can see both the copies of the first reading and the second reading, the clean. This is where we have the interpretation and indicators of the various points within OE 10. We spoke about this in workshop. Bill presented on it on the first reading at the Board Meeting last week. So at this time, I'd recommend the Board accepts the revisions for OE 10 Learning Environment Interpretation and Indicators as presented for approval.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. All right. I'll call to the audience for questions or comments. And then we'll call for a motion from the Board.
I move the Board to accept the revisions for Operational Expectations OE 10 Learning Environment Interpretation and Indicators as presented for approval.
Second. All right. Questions and comments from the Board?
It's probably worth commenting, the structure we're using establishes a policy that requires the Superintendent to interpret and then come back to us with descriptions of what he thinks we mean by the different words wording in the policies. That gives us a chance to reflect back and forth about it and agree. But the document also contains specific points of data that he can use to report on the subject of a safe supportive learning environment in this case.
So the evidence.
Yes, the evidence that we're going to collect. That the public can then see in these reports and then it becomes a component in his evaluation each year. So structured way to get a really informative system and Superintendent evaluation. That's my comment.
I think that's a good thing to point out too, Rob, is the two parts that it can somewhat get confusing, right? That the first part is the policy that, kind of what the Board wants. And then the second part is the policy with the interpretations and then the evidence that we're going to collect throughout the year.
Again, I just want to make sure that we've had the opportunity for input from our staff. Any concerns or?
No, there haven't been any concerns.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right. Next up is Matters Reserved for Board Action. And this is the 2020, that's really difficult to say, but it does not seem possible, 2020-21 Evergreen Public Schools Calendar. This is also a second reading. So we've workshopped this. We had a first reading at our November meeting and now we're bringing it back for a second reading and adoption. And so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Merino.
Yeah, we have looked at this a couple of different times. Jane [inaudible]. Janay Holmes, our chief HR officer, works with the various groups, works internally, comes up with a proposed calendar. When we talked about this at the first reading, there were some questions and comments around the week of Thanksgiving. And I think that there was a interest in posting it to the district's Facebook page to see what kind of feedback we got, or posting it somewhere to social media, which was done, I think, yesterday. And I think we had somewhere around 20, 30 comments, some positive. And really, the biggest question was around Thanksgiving, the extra couple of days of Thanksgiving. Last year, we had three days of school the week of Thanksgiving because we made one backup from the strike. This year, we just had two days. One of the questions that the board, because there were a couple of teachers at the meeting, if you recall, that one represented the idea that attendance was impacted fairly significantly that week and thought that it was a good idea to consider taking the week off. The other said she kind of saw the opposite. One was a secondary teacher and was an elementary teacher. And I think both Bill and, yeah, Bill Abell, the EEA president, and Janay talked about the fact that they surveyed the teachers and a lot of times it comes down to a fairly even split on that. So one of the pieces of data that we had, you had asked for was what is the actual attendance impact on those days? And so Bill Omen worked with our assessment office, is able to log into the system, pull some of that information out. The district attendance rate was 93% from the first day of school to the Friday before Thanksgiving. That rate for the two days prior to Thanksgiving was 89.3%. So there's about a 3%, 4% drop in those two days. And I think that's similar to what we saw the year before. So I think with that information, with a little bit of feedback, I think we would still recommend that we go with the schedule that we have been looking at. I think there were people that were happy about the fact that we started September. I think we started September because it's a late Labor Day. And we built in an extra day before Memorial Day holiday, so there's a four-day weekend then. And the last day of school is the 16th of June. So at this point, would recommend that we, the board accepts the student school calendar for 2021 as presented for adoption.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will open it up for questions or comments from the audience on the calendar.
I'll just say on behalf of a husband of a Hood to Coast team, that the teachers appreciate you guys considering that event.
We were hearing that.
Yeah, we did hear that.
But it's not the weekend after Hood to Coast that we start school, right? It's another week after.
Yeah, it's, Labor Day is on the first this year.
Correct. Well, I think what the problem with the Hood to Coast was that they would have had to miss Friday. Because they go up Friday. And so they would have had to take a day off if we had started a week later.
Labor Day, Labor Day is the seventh. That's why it's so late this year. And so we're starting school on the first.
Still a week before Labor Day like usual, like this year.
Yes.
Yes, it's the same. It's like the Tuesday before Labor Day. And I think Hood to Coast is the weekend before.
The 22nd.
Yeah, no, I think it might be the 29th, that weekend. I think it is. But I think the concern was that we would start school the week that Hood to Coast was. Because we've typically done it at the last week of August. If we did it the last week of August, maybe that would have impacted that. So that was.
They register like at the beginning of November for that event. In August, and then this calendar comes out and they're blindsided. It happened in a previous year, so.
I felt it was really important to make sure we listened to the teachers and considered that after they asked us to listen to them and consider it. I'm just being, just being me.
I have a question about that. Why does, does the Washington School District have consideration for an event that's going on in Oregon?
It impacts a lot of our, a lot of our, it impacts a lot of our students' families as well as a lot of our teachers, just people who participate in an event. It is like a really large event that being part of the greater Portland metro area, I think it's important for us to consider something that does impact a great, a decent percentage of most of the people who attend and work in our school district.
Yeah, as far as I know, it didn't come from the board or kind of top-down to say, just to make it a priority to consider. It came from the teachers and the families in the district, that they wanted us to consider when developing the calendar.
I think it's something that's always, I mean, you take all kinds of feedback on what should be considered, and then you ultimately build the schedule based on what you think works the best. It actually just so happened that the weekend, I think the concern was that it's, we typically start school the last week of August, and for whatever reason, I think Hood to Coast fell that, fell that weekend. I think it worked out right that because of the fact that Labor Day is so late, they probably always run Hood to Coast two weeks before, weekend before Labor Day or something like that. It's, it's information. I mean, it is a piece of information that's considered when Janay works with EEA and PSE and ultimately worked out.
Yeah, this year it just happened to work out.
Any other questions or comments from the audience about the calendar? All right, then we will entertain a motion from the board.
I move for approval of the 2021 school calendar as presented.
All right, now we'll open it up to the board for questions and comments.
It's finally here. Because I get asked what the first day of school is for the following year on the first day of school. Invariably, all five years that I've been at this, as soon as school begins, sometimes even before, somebody takes me aside and says, so what about next year? Are we going to do this next year or something else? And we never really know until a form once later because it has to go through such a complex process. Has to consider neighboring districts in part because we have Cascadia in our district boundaries and we need the time to take in the sensibilities of folks who work and live in the area.
And we want the work schedules to coincide with others in the other districts too, in case they have kids that go to multiple schools or, you know, there's a lot of families that have maybe, depending on, you know, how the family dynamic is, but some that might go to another school in Clark County and are in the schools in Evergreen. So we want to make sure that the breaks are aligning. There's a lot of things that go into making the calendar, a lot of things to consider. One of the things we heard after the, during the first reading was questions from some of the teachers. But then we also said, hey, well, let's get some of the public feedback. And we put it out, kind of a sneak peek on, on social media. And as Mike mentioned, there were 20 to 30 comments, and I read through all of them. And a lot of people are just like, oh, I'm glad it's starting after Labor Day or, and I'm glad we're getting it out early in June. So you have to kind of weigh all those things out because the last thing you want to do is start getting kids out so late, especially if there's no makeup days, but it's starting to get close to Fourth of July. You want to make sure that, you know, our kids and our staff have a summer and.
And everything that I've seen, you know, in those comments seemed really 50/50. You know, like what Mike was telling us, you know, and Bill Bevel was telling us about teacher response to Thanksgiving break, but some people are a little upset we're starting so late, you know, almost seemingly later, even though it's technically the same week. Because then we get out a week later in June, but other people like that. And so it's, it really seemed very 50/50 split. And I think a lot of work went into this. And came up with the best, you know, given the dates and where, you know, Labor Day falling so, as late as it possibly can next year.
We have to have 180 days of school at last.
Yeah.
Total for the year, 1,080 hours of instruction. And that's been a constraint, it's extended the school year.
I also think it's important for us, as we, you know, as the board is a work, and we get this out, obviously it has to, you know, we have to have a workshop. We do a first reading, we do a second reading. But we get it out early enough, so it's December 10th that now people are wanting to know what the calendar is for next school year. That gives people time to plan and, you know, figure out things going into the school year, going into the holiday break, and, you know, people are sort of planning their 2020 calendars. So hopefully that gives them enough time. So we're sensitive to the needs of, you know, our families and students and our employees. We want to make sure that we're doing right by everyone.
So I actually do have a question about the Hood to Coast thing, like, was this just a serendipitous year for that? Is this just a happy coincidence that Hood to Coast takes place before the school year can begin?
I think, I think it really, it must have been that there was a year where something happened where it didn't, it, I, I think it probably just so happened that it worked out right this time. But to the point that there wasn't, it didn't have to be a conscious decision, but it was certainly something that they knew about as they were talking about it. So I, you know, I don't know what the date is in August of 21. I have no idea. It, I think it worked out well. We didn't want to have two weeks of school before Labor Day. That was the issue, right? We usually have one week of school before Labor Day. We don't want to have two weeks of school before Labor Day. So it pushed it into September, and it just so happened that Hood to Coast fell the last weekend of August, so.
That's, that's good to know.
Really, the key every year is when does Labor Day fall?
Yeah. And are you going to be before Labor Day? Are you going to be after Labor Day?
We started school in Evergreen the week before Labor Day since I was 10, when my family moved. It was just, it's been that way forever.
I think they did that for your family.
We moved in and.
And just flipped the switch.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
I, I would like to, and I know we will, to re-approach the subject of the Thanksgiving week next year when we're looking at the calendar. Because even though we do have 89% of our students, as a parent of a middle schooler, their semester ended the Friday before. They went to school for two days with their new semester, so new classes, they're not, and they're really not doing a whole lot of educating. And if they did, all the kids forgot everything by the time they came back on Monday anyways. So it might be just something you don't want to, depending on when everything's falling.
Absolutely. And we're here to do it again.
They're asking a calendar, all. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, then we will take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, perfect. All right, next up is board comments. Comments from the board? Got a little bit going on, haven't we?
Yes, we. I would just real quick like to piggyback on what Mike said about what was on KGW last night with York. And the students have been practicing the choir. They actually have come in the morning, an hour before school starts, to work together with the music teacher and have been, they actually performed on Saturday at the school for Kids Corner, which is a shop for the kids. And then to prepare for going out to Lori's house yesterday or last night. We were at our, our board gatherings, so we missed it. But it's, Lori has been a teacher at York for years. And one of her biggest things is Random Acts of Kindness. So we actually have started a Facebook event, and we post our Random Acts of Kindness in her honor. But she is out battling cancer this year, so that was the way the school was able to just kind of lift her spirits and sing Christmas songs to her. And there was not a dry eye in the house. It was amazing. And to see students, staff, community members, all coming together, there were actually teachers from Vancouver on the email stream. So it was not just a York thing, it was a community thing. And it was, it was an amazing experience. I just wanted to add to that. I didn't want to interrupt your comments.
No, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was cool.
We've had a busy couple of weeks.
We've had a busy, a busy week. Julie and I had breakfast with the board over at Evergreen. And as usual, it was really interesting to hear what the students had to talk about. And we had an insightful group of students.
Their school advisory committee.
Yeah. And they were, they were very forthcoming with their thoughts about things. Let's see. I had the foundation board meeting and for the school district's foundation. They are plugging away on the gala, so want to keep everybody's mind on that to keep that.
What's the date?
Oh.
It's March 21st.
Yeah, it's in March. And it's at A-Lin-A. And of course, it's a good excuse to get a new cue out.
I'm already looking for mine.
And our friends from Chartwell's, Hussein, they, they're going to be in charge of the dessert dash again this year. And so of course, we can count on the desserts to be yummy and beautiful. So that's coming up. And then we all were at the conference, at the state school directors conference. And always interesting, the different things that we learn about and find out about. This year, after 20 years of being on the board, I went to the best class I ever was at on the budget, just understanding all the zillions of codes and really kind of breaking that down was, it was really good. I mean, you know, it's just, we've listened to it, it's like the driest subject ever. But, but I know Mike, it's your life.
That's my life.
It was interesting to find out what every digit of those codes, what the, each section means and all of that. No one's ever really gone over that with this in that, in that way, and it was good. So of all the stuff I got out of it, I thought that was one of the, the best. I had a really fun, well, we had the dual language visits that we, we did over at Pioneer and Frontier. You know, when we first started that program, I thought it was interesting and I, you know, when we first heard the research about this type of program with dual immersion, I, it made sense when they were giving us the data, and I thought it was worth a try. And now to see how that program over these years has evolved into a model program for other people from around, not only just the state of Washington, but across the United States who are looking at our program, I'm just so impressed, you know? And going into those classrooms and seeing these kids, you know, native Spanish speakers and non-native Spanish speakers, and seeing both sets of kids just going like a house of fire and not just speaking the language so beautifully, and the Spanish-speaking students speaking English really well and vice versa, but they're doing really well academically. And how that really does advance our English language learners to learn so much better and to not fall behind in the academic side of things. It's exactly what they said would happen, and it's really been amazing. And so I was really happy that that was a decision that we made all those years ago to move forward with this kind of a model. And it's proven to be good, and I'm excited to see the expansion of it. I know the challenges of finding teachers that can speak the language and moving it up through our secondary schools, but it's worth keeping that moving and, I don't know about the rest of you, but I just thought it was so fun to see.
I was not only impressed with obviously how well academically they're doing, but when we had the panel with the fifth grade students and how confident they were, just answering the questions about it and how much excitement they've gotten from being on the program for so long, that was a lot of fun to listen to them, to just see, see their confidence level.
It was, it was neat, don't you, I just loved it. And then I had the opportunity to be a guest at Chartwell's event for, Hussein, what do you call that? At your service? Oh my gosh, it was lunch. And it was the most delightful lunch that I have had with students in a really long time. We were over at Image Elementary, and I'll have to show you the picture I took of the very fancy tables. And you know, as an interior designer in my other life, I appreciate a great table. And it was beautiful. Gorgeous tablecloths, linen napkins, flowers. It was like done right. And these students were so great. They had taken their, their hour etiquette class, and they came ready to. to have the best manners, beautiful lunch, tasty, the students were impressive, the food was impressive, the service was awesome, and I could tell that it was such a great experience for our students to have such a, a great experience, to understand what it's like to experience that kind of, of a meal and, and know what it's like to, to use their best table manners and to have conversation at a table, and it was just, it was really delightful, and the mayor was there, and one of our sheriffs was there to, to head up a ta, each had a table, and I had a table, and the principal, and our head of the Family Resource Center, it was really nice. So thank you to, to you guys for putting that together for us, and I, I enjoyed it, and I know the kids just loved it.
It was fun, yeah, it really was. There's a couple more of them too coming up, so. All right, it was great. All right, any other board comments?
Uh, yeah, I actually talked about a lot of it in the course of the other business, but I got a chance last week, remember, was it, was it last week, Captain? The Cub Scouts came to my house, a couple of Cub Scouts, in connection with their caps on the war, they're supposed to talk to a community member, and so actually spent an hour with two 11-year-old boys, talking about politics and school board business, and they stayed interested, and I don't think it was because of me, but it's just, it was, it was a really neat experience to have those kinds of conversations be so substantive, and I appreciated that. I got a chance to, to, at a student's invitation, my son has graduated, he was involved in First Robotics last year, which was part of how I knew so much about it, one of the students who's on that team invited me to come to their second league tournament on Saturday, and I got to talk to the teachers and a lot of the kids about, you know, why they love robotics and so forth, and just wanted to name this time teachers, Heidi Gray, who's, I think, she's a Shaheila teacher, she might still be on sabbatical, but just an amazing project-based educator, taking care of the Union geared reaction robotics, getting, getting them to get organized and get into the world's competition last year, and it looks like they're gangbusters to do that this year. Then Edward Phillips, who's in his second year teaching and took over the Mountain View team as the advisor. The stipends for these things are really small, as are most of the Co-Graves' stipends, the time commitment is so great, and so I'm really just glad that we have people who are willing to take, take up that medal and advise and teach, because it's, it's a real amplifier, there's lots of, lots of good reasons to be grateful for that. I love the format of the new news report, I'm just going to say that right now, yeah, that is, that is better than I could have conceived, though. Thank you so much for doing that work. And, yeah, just looking forward to, my chance to come to one of those lunches and, and breakfast with the board.
I'd like to go to one of those.
It's good.
It was nice. There is one next Tuesday.
Next week.
The next Tuesday.
To give Lori and get it special, I think there's two others still for the year.
Yeah, I went to the one on Tuesday. Silver Star, right? Silver Star. Very cool. All right, any other board comments? All right, next is future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items? I guess I would just want to, at some point, maybe we do a debrief of kind of the WASTA Conference, and kind of talk about some of the things that we saw or learned, liked, maybe some, you know, ideas.
Workshop.
Yeah.
Oh, and we need to debrief too on our breakfast with the board stops as well. Do we have, do we have one scheduled at HILA and Legacy?
I don't know, I don't think we do.
We might want to check, yeah.
We have, there's, I do think we added Legacy and HILA this year.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Good.
We got to make sure we've got, remember, those of, that were scheduled for.
Yeah, and then just make sure that we debrief after, maybe we do all of them, or...
Yeah, just to really kind of break down what...
I think they're kind of scattered throughout the rest of the year, so, yeah.
So we've also had, well, we got...
Yes.
The DeAngelo book, and then the one from the beginning of the year, the Schmoker, what was the title?
Why is...
The Focus.
Leading Focus, and I think we could spend some time workshopping about, well, definitely this one, but talking about the Leading Focus book as well, because just out of the sense that as I talk to teachers who feel overwhelmed with things, there was a lot of good information and a good framework in the Schmoker book that we should be discussing, so.
All right, anything else? All right, then at this time, we'll go into citizen comments, if there's anybody that wishes to address the board, if they'll come up to the podium, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, just make sure it's not personnel-related, not an individual employer or student that's not legal in nature.
Hi. Art Domar, 3414 Northeast 175th Avenue, Washington, 98682, this podium's a little bit awkward with the computer here. I came here in a previous meeting, they really kind of just want to story, tell the story of, of why we chose to take our son out of Evergreen, and he started kindergarten at Pioneer, dual immersion program. We started to have some issues, and then at the end of the school year, he really wasn't getting through the whole day anymore. We came back, or we went to outside counselor, did a lot of different work to do some interventions to help with behavior. We came back to school in first grade with that intervention in progress, the school component that Pioneer helped support. Then we got through some of the school year, we ended up doing emergency one-on-one, my son felt safe at school, and there were no issues. Then that went away, because that's only like a 30-day or 60-day option, right? Then there was this incident in the lunchroom where my son was eating, he's first grade, eating peanut butter with his finger out of his, from home for lunch, and some other kids didn't like that and complained to the recess duty, and then he was told to stop eating peanut butter with his finger, and he got upset about that and tried to wipe peanut butter on the teacher, and then she put hands on him, then he bit her, and that was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, where we decided that, we didn't know that that was a good fit for our son anymore, things just weren't working. So we went to a dual immersion school in Camas, we had a really great second grade year there with the supports we had put in place from the counselor that we had worked with outside. We came back third grade, change of teachers, principal there was overwhelmed with some personal issues and staffing issues, things got kind of bad there. The first incident, he got scared at school, tried to leave school, they didn't want him to leave, so before he even got out the door, they grabbed him, called me to come pick him up, they held him down for like a half an hour, because it takes a while for me to get to work to the school. We had a few incidents like that at that school, and they decided they couldn't support us anymore, which is fair, they're a small school. So we thought, well, we'll return to our, our neighborhood school, and so I met with the principal and explained their situation and brought the data, we agreed we'd put him on a 504 plan to try to accommodate his challenges, right? We got set up with a really great teacher, and she worked with this, him really well, we were able to give her some of the cues, you know, to look for, things went really well, this was like the November timeframe. And then in January, he had a challenge one day, decided to barricade himself in the classroom. We really wanted the administration to have a relationship with him, so when he got scared at school, that he'd feel safe when they came, but that didn't happen. Principal was out that day, so the weaker of the two administrators, just by their skillset, came, ended up being a hands-on incident, classroom clear, and unfortunately, and I almost wondered if this is part of the reason it happened, a couple days prior, there was the lockdown drill at school, and so, you know, the staff, this was really awkward, sort of celebrating that they were able to use their lockdown drill, drill skills when my son, you know, got scared at school, and sort of freaked out, right? And he has challenges. And a couple of these incidents went on after that, you know, things kind of tend to snowball for him, either to the positive or the negative, so we always say that the second grade year we had a positive snowball, and then the decision was made by administration to do emergency expulsion for 10 days. We decided that, you know, we've done a lot of different counseling things, we decided to take him to a clinic in Bellevue to have some different evaluations done, spent $4,000 there doing those different evaluations, pretty quick turnaround, we decided to do some medications and see if that would help. He transitioned back into school, and I was sharing some of it in a previous meeting about, sort of the way that transition happened was, was really awkward, and he had to go, he had to come in late, like at 10 o'clock, and go home at 2 o'clock, and then, you know, he wasn't in his Legger classroom, he was in a different, separate classroom, and, you know, they had students come in and visit him, and this sort of strange schedule that went on, where we progressively added a little bit more time, and I felt like I had to push to get him back into like the regular classroom environment, and part of the purpose of, of doing that was we were doing like a meds trial, right? So what do the meds need to be at for like a normal environment, right? But we had this weird not normal environment going on, and then I think spring break came around, and then we had a good couple of months, you know, my daily routine was to take my son to school, do a lap around the campus to make sure he gets some morning exercise before he goes to class, so, you know, you can tell my family's investing a ton amount of energy and time and money and trying to make sure he's successful. And then, you know, we had some more incidents, and then another 10-day, or at, at that point, we were all moving on to an IEP, right? So we moved to an IEP, we're, we're doing the IEP services, been going for a couple weeks, and he's expressing to me that he's upset about the IEP and missing classroom time, and, and mind you, my son's IQ's real high, gets an intelligent program qualified, if he had been going to school here this year, he would have been doing the pull-out program on the campus over here. And so he was worried about missing special events in the classroom, so we set up a meeting, met with the staff about that, he was able to express, you know, his concerns about that, and asking for help is one of his challenges. And then the following day, we have another big incident, and, and then we're on another 10-day emergency expulsion. And my feeling was, this is, this isn't right, so I appealed it, right? So I come here and I have a, a appeal meeting in the room next door, and one of the things that was put in the documentation was that he was hurting himself and cutting himself, and I asked the vice principal, I don't understand, there's no marks on it, so how, how, what's going on? It just doesn't add up. So no, he wasn't really cutting himself, it was more of an embellishment, you know, he was putting the scissors on his fingers or something, and so I'm concerned about that embellishment of documentation. I was really bothered by that, at that particular time, because I had a coworker who had his son suicide, so that hit me pretty hard, I didn't, I didn't want anything like that So, you know, then it was decided that was not, it was okay, that, that was within the guidelines that, that kill, or excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to say names, but out of that, out of that decision, he upheld that emergency expulsion was within the guidelines, right? I, I was, you know, upset by this, I decided to get legal counsel, we're doing a manifested termination meeting, I have my legal counsel come to that meeting, that was all delayed because of allegedly this district didn't know that I had legal counsel and so on, so this all took more time. So then we finally have a meeting, and, you know, in that meeting, it was discussed, it's a faith violation and that this shouldn't have been expelled repeatedly like that, right? And I know we're not supposed to talk about legal issues, but we got to talk about these issues somewhere. So...
Yeah, we, we want to make sure that we're not going into legal issues, okay?
Sure, I, I think I can talk about them if I need to.
No, you can't, actually, because it is not legal for us to talk about it, and it's not because we don't want to, but it is a statute.
Okay, it's a statute.
In an open board meeting, that we can't, and there are ways for you to have conversations about it, and there's ways for you to do that if you want to do that, but you can't do that here.
I can't do that here. I'll take that in advisement. So I don't want to go into that any further, but, you know, I'm curious how you know about these issues, are you being apprised of these issues, or is the data showing you what's really going on with these situations? And as a parent, you know, I didn't feel supported, you know, so I'm asking, what can the board do? What can the school district do to support parents with any of these situations? Make them feel like part of the team? I thought it was really great how Mike talked about the, or the whole board talked about building relationships, because this is what it's about, I don't feel like I'm part of the team, right? My family doesn't feel like we're part of the team. That, that's the piece, I think, that, that needs to be, to be fixed. So, you know, what we're doing now is we're doing this online school, it's kind of a modified homeschool model, right? But I, I thought you should know why, why we decided that Evergreen's not a fit right now for, for our kiddo, and I think we're many, one of many families.
All right, thank you.
Somebody wanted to phone and discuss 6279.
Oh, we have somebody on the list. Bob, I'm not sure what your last name is, is there Bob in the audience that wanted to come up?
First name Bob?
Yes, first name Bob.
I'm hardly hearing that.
Oh, come on up, Bob. One of the things too, I want to tell the comments, just for anybody that has not been in the boardroom before, we're not able to respond back, so it's not part of our agenda, but again, you'll have three minutes to talk to us and tell us your name and address, and just remember, it can't be personnel or legal in nature, okay?
Three minutes seem a little inadequate to address situations, but famous Syndergrom, Bob Syndergrom, 115002 Southeast Sun Park Drive, up here, across the street from Evergreen High School, pardon me, from Mountain View High School. And I got a notice here in, in the mail here a few days ago that you guys are going to tear down Mountain View High School. I find that, that stupid. That school opened in 1981, it's 38 years old, I understand there's some electrical problems in there. There is not electrical problem in that building that cannot be rectified for less than tearing the school down, that's, for example, I did some research here, Evergreen was open in '45, and they replaced that in 20, about 2010, so that was 65 years old. House School was built in 1941, it's got 79 years going, it's still going. Washington Grade School was built in 1912 and replaced in 2003, was 91 years old. Hudson Bay High School opened up for students in 1957, it's now 62 years old. Fort Vancouver has opened up in '70 or '71, I'm not sure which, but it's still almost 50 years old, and those schools are still going on. So you guys are going to tear down Mountain View High School, has some electrical problems, and it's not because you have, you, it's not big enough to handle the student population, because you're, you're going to build a school that's going to handle 2,000 people, and it doesn't have 2,000 people now. It's going to be three stories high, so it's going to be completely engineered and completely the building drawings and everything, architectural drawings, I've been involved with some commercial buildings before, and architectural fees... And architectural fees and engineering fees are run about 20% of the cost of buildings. If you're going to build a $50 million building, 20% of that is going to be starting from scratch. If you're going to build a new school, why don't you go someplace and find somebody who'll build a school in the last five or 10 years and use their plans? You can't say it's because of the layout of the land. Because you can take a bulldozer and shorten up Mount Hood in about a week. So it's not about that. And if you guys are going to tear that school down and build on the other end of the campus, I'm going to be the first guy to start pioneering a deal up there to get people to not vote under lettuces. And I'm in favor of lettuces. I don't have a kid in, I haven't had, hadn't had a kid in school for 60 years, I'm 80 years old. And I'm going to, I'm going to be the guy that's going to beat around the doors and knock on doors and try to get you guys stopped on this thing. I think it's ludicrous to build, to destroy a 38-year-old, I live in a 44-year-old house and I've had electrical problems. I call a guy, he comes and fixes it and gives me a bill. Huh, how can that be? Those schools are built to fix. Anything's built to fix. If a man built it, a man can fix it. And I want you guys to fix that school. I've had problems with the people in that school before, won't go into that, it was lessons, I was really unhappy about it when I had to, I am going to tell you about it. I'm the first house that you can see from the campus that the kids can walk around in my neighborhood there and have a cigarette break. So for about three months, I got tired of picking up the garbage, I would get a half a can of garbage a week. Beer cans, pop cans, stuff from all the McDonald's and all the places they can buy lunch things, condoms, cigarette butts. And I came, I went to the principal and asked him about it. I took a bag full of trash over to him, I says, here's one week's selection. He says, there's nothing we can do about kids when they get off the campus. I said, well, okay, you want to make your problem my problem. So I emptied the garbage can full of trash on his floor. Only banned me from the campus, I could really care less. And one other thing I want to address is, you're, you're preparing kids to go to college. Everybody can't go to college. Bill Gates dropped out of college as a freshman. There's an example, you don't have to go to college. I never went to college, I made a success of my life. I called a couple of people, for an example, one is a contractor here in town, he's got nine people working for him and they all make 35 bucks an hour. And he says, if I can find somebody who knows which end of the nail you can hit with a hammer, I'll start it with 20 bucks an hour and see what will happen. 35 bucks an hour is $70,000 a year. I don't know how many years you got to be a teacher to make more than $70,000, but my daughter's a school teacher, she makes about 60. I called an electrician, friend of mine who has an electrician in company. He says he's got openings for five people, they pay him 50 bucks an hour. That's 100 grand a year, 50 bucks and I'm working 50 weeks. I called another friend of mine whose son is a mechanic for Hannah Christ of Plymouth down there. Christ Plymouth, they threw away Plymouth this year. He gets a percentage of the work ticket that he makes that, he makes $72,000 last year. You gotta prepare these kids, someone's got to fix your car, someone's got to empty your garbage out of your front yard, someone's got to mow your yard, someone's got to take care of you Fred Myers when you go spend your money. You guys aren't preparing people to do that. And I, I think you're making a big mistake by not doing that. I know I've eaten up my three minutes or more, but anyway, I'm glad you listened to me. But this school thing, when I, I checked it, I came down here when you guys had a meeting here one other time about five years ago, when you invited people down, they were talking about school building. And I asked them, if you, you guys ever build the same unit twice? Well, you really can't because of the building codes and a school that was built last year, let's say the building codes have changed 20 points, you address those 20 points, use their plan and start building the building. You start from scratch, you can build, if you're going to build this piece right here, you're only going to build one that's going to cost you $20,000 to build one. You're going to build 20,000 of them, they're going to be seven cents apiece. So build more than just the one program or one school. You don't have to, they don't have to all look the same, there's not any schools in this district or any district you can go, or any of them look the same. Why is that? Why do you have to build a different building every time?
We can't respond and it's killing me because there's so many things I'd love to say right now.
We can have somebody follow up with you after though.
But our head of facilities is here and I would love for you to talk to her before you leave tonight because some of the things that you're concerned about, I know she could address and you, I think you would feel better about some things.
I would like to talk to somebody who, who'll sit down and make, make me a believer and I'll be the guy that votes for the, for the lettuces.
Okay. I think she's the person you want to talk to.
I'm going to be campaigning against you.
Because some of the things you're worried about, she'll be happy to, to help you with.
Point me to this lady.
She's waving.
You're there?
Yeah.
I'll go to the hallway.
She can't wait.
Go to the hall.
All right.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
All right, anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board?
Question on...
Yes.
6279.
When you come up, you can just give your name and address to you for the record, we appreciate that.
1921 North East Meyer and First Avenue, Vancouver, Washington. So on Resolution 6279, this is giving access to the city of Vancouver for stormwater rights. I didn't see anything in here about having clear personnel as far as those subcontractors, other individuals with access onto the school around properties. Is there any resolution pieces in there or in the city code that would address that to make sure that it's clear personnel that are entering school property so that there's not somebody that may have some kind of violation that would be entering school around that shouldn't be entering school around?
Do you mean subject to background checks?
Yeah.
And the other vetting processes?
Whatever that would be, appropriate vetting processes for that.
Volunteers or teachers or?
He, he's talking about with the city.
With the city.
City staff comes onto our property to inspect the stormwater. What, what is there in writing in contract or what is it in the city code they wouldn't hire somebody to come onboard? We, we'll find out, we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the audience? All right, well, seeing none. At this time, we will go into a recess where we'll sign documents. We will reconvene in the same room for a board workshop. We will do middle school math curriculum, naming a new school, policy 6700, procedure of food celebrations and rewards at schools. We'll have a legislative update, another superintendent's update, and then a board meeting debrief. And then at that time, we'll go into an executive session where we'll have a discussion about real estate and then we'll review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.